It's past seven and as was pointed out, we do have a court there stand. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
All right, let me share our flag. Can everybody see the flag?
Not quite. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation under God. With liberty. For all.
Very good, thank you. So, roll call please.
Cody. Here. You raised your hand. Squachrito?
Here in Mount Pleasant.
Buckley?
Here, Mount Pleasant.
Fuller?
Here, Mount Pleasant.
Darren?
Here, Mount Pleasant.
Shingles?
Here in Mount Pleasant.
Lap?
Here in Union Township.
Ann LaBelle?
Here, Mount Pleasant, Isabella County.
We have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. So, we last met on December fifteenth. And so you have minutes from the December fifteenth meeting in your packet. Are there any corrections to the December fifteenth minutes? Early lengthy set, we had a bunch of different motions.
They look complete to me, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay, so the motion was by Fuller to approve the December fifteenth minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Buckley, further discussion. I'll just ask for a voice vote on this, all in favor of approving the December fifteenth minutes as prepared, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carry. Next, we've got correspondence, board reports and presentations. I see that the first item is a presentation on the Isabella County Jail project. In advance, I assume, of a special use permit application twenty dash zero three. Rodney, do you want to say anything about that?
So, thank you, I'm promoting that to panelists. The three representatives tonight for the presentation, that's Darryl Dehan, Troy Grunder and Rob Conley. And so I will. I'm not sure if they may need me to unmute them. So be, ask them to unmute and then we'll let them get started.
Good evening, guys. My name is Darryl Dehan, can everybody hear me okay? Great, I'm going to, I'm gonna share my screen. Here, give me a second. So you should be seeing, you should be seeing now in aerial, we're up about, I don't know, twenty thousand feet near or so. Can everybody see my screen, okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Well, again, my name is Darryl Dehan, I'm with Integrated Architecture. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. With me, I have Troy Grunder from Row Engineering, he is the civil engineer of record on the project. And then Rob Conley, representing Clark Construction, the construction manager on the project. I'm gonna, I know you guys have a big agenda in front of you, so I'm going to take you through a, we'll kind of start high. So our project is located, the Isabella County Sheriff's Office and Correctional Facility is located on the intersection of Remus Road and Somerton. It's a parcel of around thirty-six acres here outlined in the light green area. The, the building that we've cited onto the property is around sixty thousand square, sixty thousand square foot footprint. It contains sheriff's office functions, inmate housing, intake booking function. So it serves as both a jail, the corrections facility and a sheriff's office. Real quickly, from a, from a site standpoint, just to give you a sense of orientation, scale and size. Again, the, the, the building, the jail, the correctional facility is, is the shape here in, in the tan. It's located around six hundred feet setback off of Remus Road and around seven hundred feet setback from Somerton. It's arranged in this position to, to preserve some of the rural buffering. That we know is important in this area from just public roadways, from neighboring properties, some of the residential properties here. But it also gives us the, the option for future growth in this portion of the site, kind of the south portion of the site. The building was arranged in such a way to, to orient it, its public face, which is really this liner, the wrap around. The wrap that goes around the inmate housing area, which is a square here in the center that we call the pod. That contains, it's a two-story structure, it's really a first floor plus a mezzanine, around a hundred and eighty-seven beds. Various types of cell classifications, so that's the inmate portion there. Looking at site circulation, we have two entry points, two drives. The first here is the, is the staff entry and exit, so this is the roadway by which all staff would, would move through the, the property. Sheriff's, Sheriff's Department, staff administrative functions, et cetera. And that leads to the back of house area here, for the sheriff's office and jail, which is largely utility yard and then some loading service area here. It continues to wrap to, around to the south, eventually to the Sally Port, which is where arrestees and all, all prisoner movements happen. So again, notice that this, the, the, the more sensitive movements and the staff movements that are happening around the jail are, are intentionally located to the southwest. So being buffered here by this heavy wood line and being shielded from, from vehicular views, pedestrian movements on both Remus and Somerton. So again, staff movement here, movement through the Sally Port, some parking here for inmate work release programs, various staff. And Sheriff's Department vehicles, then we have a staff parking lot here. This will be a gated fenced and secured parking lot for patrol vehicles and administrative staff parking. So that, that is separated from the public parking area here, which one would get to from Somerton Road. So this is the primary means of ingress and egress for vehicular movements. And then locating the entry here, kind of at the terminus of that entry point, so this is a non-secured. No different than what you might find at a courthouse or other civic building, an open, open parking lot for, for public there. Additionally of note, in the, in the, in the site is some of the, the buffering that we've, we've added to just be mindful to our neighbors, to the residents, to the west, to the north. And then to the east and south here, these shapes are, are earth berms, their, their soil that we intend to use from the site. We have a fair amount of, of excess topsoil, so we're hopeful to, to keep these, the soil native, native soil to the site. So this would just be a, again, an organic form, natural earth burning with some, some evergreen trees per the township ordinance. Stormwater detention occurring in this area here to the west, just due to the natural way that the site drains and slopes. And then the green space here and here, kind of these rural buffer areas, the, the goal for that would be to keep those natural. Whether it's a natural seeded mix, wildflower, et cetera, but that, that would not, that the intent is to not mow that and have that irrigated or turf, it'd be more of a natural area. So next, I'm gonna go into a little bit more of a focal view of the building itself. So the tan areas, the beige areas that you see are, are areas which arrestees and inmates and correctional officers would move. So it's, they really represent the secure portion of the facility. So again, we have our Sally Port here to the south, inmate housing, first level, second level mezzanine here pulled off. And then the sheriff's function, all in blue here, the only reason this is broken up is we have some kitchen and laundry functions. Which, which inmates would, which trusty inmates would use on a day-to-day basis. So if, if you're the public, the entry point would be here to the east. Upon entering, you'd be greeted by receptionist here, clerk reception functions, the sheriff's office. Visiting inmate visit, visitation area here, and I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail in the floor plan, just giving you a little bit of a sense of lay of the land. And then the, the windowed portion of the building really is primarily this portion here. And that's the, that's the facade that we're really presenting to Remus and Somerton, the, the viewable point of the, of the building. And as we get, as we turn the corner and kind of walk down the wall here, this all goes to opaque, including the, the facade around the, the inmate pod itself. So no windows, it's, it's a combination of metal panel and brick. The daylight requirements for inmate housing is being met by skylights, so we do not have windows around this portion of the jail. With the exception of a, of a small opening here for exercise, and that's located up approximately twelve feet or so off the grade. So this is the exercise area, so there would be an overhead door that would allow both ventilation and daylight requirements for, for inmates using the exercise. Area. Have a couple of renderings of the exterior, so you'll note some of the materials along the top. It's, it's really a combination of masonry, brick veneer and pre-finished metal panels. So the goal here is to, to have an enduring, a intentionally civic facade. But one, but one that's, that's approachable and is long-lasting. So, you know, I, I think perceptions of jails and sheriff's offices, you know, we all have them. I think the intent here is to break that stereotype a little bit and, and do something a little bit more civically minded. You can see here in the background, this would be, this would be the view looking southwest. So we're looking from the northeast to southwest, and this would be the projection of the, of the pod, the inmate housing in the back. So one story for the wrapper, the liner, and then projecting up to, to closer to a two-story height in the back. And you're looking here at what would be the, the public parking area or visitor parking. And just a close-up of the public entry, so again, you know, being budget conscious but presenting something that's of civic. Of civic note and, and something that's approachable and respectful to, to the surroundings. So I guess with that, I will, and that was a really quick overview, we have. I have civil engineering documents here, Troy is on the phone as well. So we're happy to take questions, to comment, comments, and then to, to look at, into more detail, anything that anybody has interest in.
Well, it certainly looks, it looks like a nice project. And obviously, a lot of effort has gone into this. The question I'd like to ask just upfront is, to what extent have you all interacted with, attempted to establish a relationship with? And attempted to inform the adjacent property owners of what you all are gonna be doing and how they're gonna be able to happily coexist with this?
Yep, we, so, so the design team and, you know, just for a lot of circumstances and COVID being the, the primary one, this has been largely a remote project. Our commissioners, I know at one point, I, I believe one of the, the county commissioners made contact with one, if not both of these property owners here. And I don't think, I'm not sure if that commissioner is, is with us today, but I'd be happy to, to follow up on that question and get you a response to that.
Cause, and I'll open it up to other planning commissioners momentarily, but I just, I just want to say that, that, you know, in my experience with the, with the road commission project. You know, the, the surrounding property owners, when they tried to put the thing up on Lincoln, were, were just up in arms. And, you know, it's not as densely populated in the area out here, but still, it's, it, you know, it's gonna be a lot smoother of a process if, if, if we don't have a room full of angry people when this gets to us. So I've always, and for that situation, I didn't understand why they didn't make more of an effort to try to educate and, and really win over the property owners. So I mean, I think that that's a worthwhile endeavor for this type of project, it seems to me.
Yep.
So I'll open it to other.
We agree.
Questions from other planning commissioners, I see Mike with his hand up.
Thank you, Phil. I'm interested in the lighting requirements for the surrounding area, if there are any. And also if there is a perimeter fencing and what that might look like. If there is a perimeter fence.
Yep. Currently, sorry, give my screen a second to, to catch up here, I'll, I'll answer your first question, and that is one of, of lighting. So the, the drawings that I'm bringing up here are, are photometric plans. So what we've done is we've, they're full cutoff fixtures, it's all high efficient LED lighting. You know, non-light polluting type fixtures, you can see here that they, they are cut off, they're directional fixtures to where we're not getting any light bleed. Kind of off the backside, all these lights are being directed internal to the site. So we do have some, some pole lighting here for the drive, that's a pole, pole lighting here for the drive, and then of course, securing the parking area. Just for after hours or, or pre-morning hours when it's dark out, just for the safety of, of staff, visitors, and then just movements here.
So nothing, sorry, so nothing at the perimeter? It's hard for me to read that fine print, but nothing at the perimeter for lighting?
Nothing at the perimeter for lighting, correct?
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, and then to answer your second question on the fencing, the perimeter of the, of the parcel is not fenced. The only fence we currently have for the project is this staff parking area, this is secured, it's gated and secured. And then we have a, really an equipment yard enclosure, dumpster enclosures, just service equipment items here. So that, that represents the extent of the, of the site fencing.
Thank you very much.
Phil, Ryan Buckley has.
Yeah, I, I see, I do see Ryan, I can't see everyone right now, but I do see Ryan, so Ryan?
Um, a couple of questions, I am curious about, I like the, I like the earth berms and the, the screening on top of those. I, I can't tell on the, on the public entrance on Somerton, is there any screening there along the roadway or no? Is that, is there, I mean, obviously to the south is, is wooded, but I, I don't know what screening there may or may not be on the Somerton roadway, or if it's necessary, I guess.
Yeah, screening here is, to answer your question, just bluntly, no, we don't have screening here. I think we're, we're, there, there's a sensitivity with just, you know, vehicular movements at, at, at drive entry points. So we, we've kept that, that's just one of the reasons we've kept it off of that area. But like you've noted, we, we focused it into really intentional residential bermed screening areas. But do have a little bit up along this side, but currently we do not have screening at the, at the visitor entry point.
Is there, do you have an elevation on the berm?
Oh, Troy, help me out here, I think these are one-foot contours.
Yeah, those are one, we haven't, we haven't graded the berm, but, but the berm will be, you know, if I had to guess, I'm gonna say five to six feet high, you know. So with the trees on top of the berm, you're gonna have a, you know, a, a good buffer there between the residences and, and the, and the jail facility itself.
Okay, and is there, last question, is there any, it sounds like without any windows and only having kind of a atrium or kind of light from above, natural light from above. Is there any concern about general noise from occupants of the jail? Any concern about that being a noise, noise issue for residential neighbors?
No, no, frankly, none, and the reason for that is currently the design has, it's, it's really kind of belt suspended. So the, these cells that you see here enlarged, they're, they're prefabricated steel cells. So they, they, this, this represents the secure line of the jail, the second line in. And that is the, the steel cells, they're insulated for sound actually already. So behind that, we have our secondary, our building wall, and that's a, it's a, it's called an insulated metal panel. So it's a tilt-up metal panel, has about three inches of foam insulation and it's pre-finished from the outside. So we really have two layers, and this area in between is a, is a service chase. So all of the mechanical, the logical plumbing, everything serving the cells happens in this chase here. So we really have a nice buffer for sound, sound won't be an issue here.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica?
This is back to the question about the neighboring landowners. I believe George Green instructed the jail committee to reach out to the neighboring landowners, so it might be worth talking to the commissioners to find out if that did occur.
I will certainly follow up on that.
Very good. I noticed when people do activate their raise hand button, they actually appear on my screen. So other commissioners want to ask a question, I would encourage you to hit your raise hand button so that then I'll see you and I'll recognize you. I see Jessica again, did you have another question?
Yes, in terms of future expansion, which direction are you looking at this adding on to the south end of the building, or how would that work?
Well, we've planned for direction, or we've planned for expansion, and you know, the future is obviously uncertain, but one that behooves us to plan for that. So a, a couple of areas, this is an area for future expansion, if and when that becomes a need. You know, there, there's been a lot of reform just in, in jail design and, and in the corrections industry recently. So we're not sure where that's gonna take us, but we have to be mindful of that. So that's an opportunity for expansion if and when it's needed, cannot possibly project when that might happen. But then for the larger county functions, and there, there are, there can be many that would happen here along the south part. So this is an opportunity for expansion here, and then this is an opportunity for expansion. Don't know what that might be in the future, but we, we've, we've cited this also with, with that in mind.
I see Ryan.
Just on that note, and maybe you have this information, maybe you don't, I'm just kind of curious as to what, size-wise, what, how, how big of an expansion is this from the current county facilities? In terms of average occupancy, I guess, are we, do you have a sense of how much larger we are?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the sheriff is on, I, it's a, you know, from the, the facility that they have today and where we're at from, you know, with, with prison reform and just trends in, in housing inmates. It, it's changed, obviously, so we are, I want to say twenty percent more or so than, than what the county currently has for their population at, at the current jail. It's relative, it's relatively close, and you know, obviously the needs have come down, but we're also, you know, planning for the future.
Just from a building square footage standpoint, this facility is about seventeen thousand square feet larger than the current facility from, from raw square footage.
Stan?
Yeah, this question is for Darryl, as you, as you talked about future expansion, just trying to understand, I know you don't have current plans. But you said there would be lots of options, what, what would be? What would be potential options to be in this space with the jail?
They, they would be, they would be current functions that the county, the county has today. So, you know, as, as they look at their changing needs at their, at their properties, you know, we, we've talked about things like administrative functions, courthouse functions, facilities, group functions, storage. They're really all on the table, and we, I mean, we really have not earmarked any one particular function other than, you know, that, this is a pretty particular one. This would obviously be growth for, to support the, the jail and or sheriff's office itself. But beyond that, any of those, any of those functions that I just mentioned.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Back to, back to Mike.
Darryl, I'm looking at the, the entrance for twenty-four hour entrance, I believe, on the south end. The, as the road exit, the sweeping area where the headlights would shine over the detention pond. It looks like there's a naked area there that could potentially, yes, there could potentially affect the neighbor here. I'm not sure if there's opportunity next to the detention ponds to add some more light barrier, the headlight barrier. Because I assume it's twenty-four seven, yeah, looks like an opportunity to affect that neighbor.
Yeah, that's, that's something we can definitely look at, I think without getting into. This would be the area of the stormwater detention here, and we, we still have to marry up that berm with the, with the stormwater detention area. So I think that's a good point, that's something we can certainly consider is, is stretching that down a little bit, because you're, you're right, the, the movements here of, of exiting vehicles. We, there, there is a, there is a, quite a nice wooded buffer here, but you know, we know that, that may not always be there. So we can look at some strategies, perhaps it's some additional screening here even, just to, to filter, to block those headlights from the neighboring property. We can review that, it's a good comment, thank you.
Darryl, there's also space to shift that detention area south and to, you know, like you said, marry that berm to the detention limits to, to fill in any gaps there.
Yep.
I remember in the coverage of this, early on, there was, I remember seeing something about that there was some sort of law or something that said that the sheriff's office had to be in the county seat. And of course, this is in Union Township, has that been resolved, am I remembering that right?
Yeah, you are actually, and what we're doing, and you know, it's, this is a separate convert, separate project frankly, is creating after the jail and sheriff's office comes down over the county's property. Creating a, a bit of an annex, so we can, we can retain that function. So the sheriff would have a seat at, at the county location. It would serve as a, you know, it would have a separate Sally Port, holding area, connection to the, the courthouse system. But that's, that's being done as a separate project, so you are correct, and that's being addressed at the existing jail.
So other questions from commissioners, Ryan?
Um, forgive my ignorance here, the Sally Port, I'm assuming that's where inmates are, are they picked up and, or dropped off? When, when Mike was talking about the potential lights and the traffic there.
Yep.
So. Is there, if, if that is a twenty-four hour operation, is there, I know I mentioned screening earlier on that one side, is there any concern? Is there any concern that a vehicle might pull up if they're doing a drop off or something like that? Or a pickup, pull up there and in that circle have its headlights shining for a period of time, which would be shining toward the road potentially or no?
Typically, when that transfer is made, the, the doors are, are down. So this becomes a secure Sallyport. So, so prisoner arrestee movement happens within the Sallyport in, in a, in a secured type scenario. So, so when, when the door goes up or when we're in a vehicle comes and goes, you're right, there will be some headlights there. But when they're, when it's sitting there, it's, it's in a secured mode and those doors are down.
Okay. Is there any need then for, I don't know what the distance is for to get to the road there, but would there be any need for kind of just some immediate screening there for pulling in and pulling out?
Yeah, you're talking about like right through here?
Right, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, it's about, it's about 700 feet, you know, a couple hundred yards or so from the roadway. But that, that's something we can consider. I think that's a, that'd be a good added sensitivity, just especially for this neighbor and, you know, whatever happens in this area. So we can, we can look at that.
Mike again?
Thank you, Phil. Another, maybe it's a silly question, but I've never lived or spent much time around a sheriff's office. But we're talking about headlights, but is there a consistent amount of time where you come in with your, over your beacon lights on to where it's a distraction for the neighbors? Man, that's more of an operating question than I could.
Yeah, yep. And I'm not sure if the sheriff, I'm not sure if the sheriff is on with us tonight.
He's on. If maybe our Rodney or whoever's in charge can, can move him over.
Find him.
Was here. Why am I not seeing him now? Oh, I don't know why I'm not seeing him. Not looking in the right place to see him.
Yep.
Hello?
Hi Sheriff.
Hi.
Did you hear, did you hear my question?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, thank you.
So, so you know, that's one of the conversations we've had with, you know, with our internal team a little bit. You know, not necessarily coming into the facility with overheads on or anything like that flashing. But you know, we do get those calls where we, we head out in, in that hot mode. We have had those conversations a little bit about, it's a little different in the city where, you know, we've got a lot of side streets where it's important to have those lights and stuff on, those sirens. Where here, you know, operationally, we certainly, I think are going to visit when it's appropriate to turn those on and, and use those because, you know, that's a pretty unused stretch of road there on Remus Road. There's not a lot of houses in there and, and, you know, we want to be, you know, kind of the neighbors and stuff. So that is certainly an operational thing that we're going to discuss and have been discussing in regards to when to turn those lights and sirens on headed out to a call, coming into the facility unless something's really went south, not necessarily. And I, and I just jumped back to one of the conversations in regards to the inmate population. It really is about the same as our current facility. And one of the reasons we didn't go bigger, there wasn't a need. There's a misconception in the community that we house inmates from downstate and all over. That hasn't been the fact since I've been here. Plus, it hasn't been the fact throughout, I don't know, five or six years prior to me coming here and being sheriff. So we do hold a few federal inmates. We do that because of the tribes, a federally recognized tribe. And, and that kind of helps out a little bit there and it, it helps us a little bit too. But our numbers have been, pre-COVID with some of the bail reform, our numbers have been down to about the 150 ranges or so. So we, we have a lot of room and, and moveability and the classification for the new facility will really help us out with that.
Jessica?
I had a question about where the new jail will be located in relation to the city. There is no connecting overpass, is there, over 127 from Remus? Is that something that you will pursue in the future and requesting the county consider adding that? Or is that going to be an issue in terms of getting access to the west part of, well, west to the city and west to the rest of the county?
Miss Lab, are you, are you addressing that to me? I'm assuming?
I guess that's just a general question. I don't know if that's come up in terms of when you were looking at land and what was appropriate land to use.
So, so that, that is kind of a concern, you know, so anything to the south, you know, like the, the southern part of the township and southern part of the county is pretty simple and easy for us. In fact, it's a little more speedy, if you will. I mean, we can probably get down to those, that Deerfield Row and the Bluegrass and those things sometimes where the heavy loads are at. Going north, that's been a concern of mine since day one with the property. The property was chosen, you know, for price and availability and different things. But, you know, I, I've had some unofficial conversations internally about, you know, how to handle that. That, that is a concern because going north is, you know, as you well aware, Somerton and Pickard, which is in a great intersection. And you've got Broadway and Isabella and Pickard and Isabella. So those are things we're gonna have to, to really think about operationally again when we, when we travel. You're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Yeah, Sheriff Maine, you brought up a, a, a good point when you were talking about operationally, having some conversations about when lights and sirens go on. I'm assuming that you, I'm assuming that based on my experience, you, you can't go with one without the other. So they both come out at the same time. Do you expect that that conversation will eventually fall into a, maybe setting a, a, a limit on, well, either at an intersection or something unless there's an extreme need that you'll, you'll be turning them on once you're, you know, past the main houses right there, turning everything on? Or is it, or, or do you think it'll just be kind of on a case by case basis and in terms, in terms of how urgent is it? I'm just, I'm just curious if, if there's a, a level of expectation that the immediate residents might be able to have on, well, the lights and sirens go on once they are, you know, I don't know, 100 yards north or south of the property, you know, something to that effect.
So, so policy wise, I, as far as I'm here, as long as I'm here, it won't be a policy because the MCL code dictates lights and sirens on certain types of calls. You can't have one or the other. Now, does it happen? There are some rare situations where it can. Does it happen? Absolutely. Day versus night's a huge difference. Lights on in the day with no sirens, not probably a big deal. Lights on at night, maybe a big deal. I, I, I think though, the unwritten rule, if you will, will be probably not until they get to the intersection there to, to head one way or the other. And the problem is if, if they have one on and not the other and they get into a, a crash or something at intersection and they're, they didn't have their siren on per se, then we are extremely liable for those things. So.
And that was, yeah, I'm sorry. That was my, that was my expectation. I knew that you, you wouldn't be able to really probably use one without the other. I, I guess what I'm just kind of curious about is it's, it's those, if, it's really that house right on the intersection right there that, I mean, I don't know how much in terms of the number of runs a day and, and how many times you're coming out hot versus, you know, something that's not emergency, but that house could, could catch a beating in terms of when lights and sirens go on at that intersection. You know, they could, depending on the, the, the amount of calls you're doing on a given day.
And I can tell you, just, you know, historically here, when I hear the sirens kick on, you know, in the city here during the day or whatever, it's typically, I probably don't hear them a couple times every two or three weeks. Most times, you know, it's pretty limited. And quite frankly, you know, the, the deputies don't come back here and wait for the call. They're out obviously patrolling our systems. We, we write reports in the car. So seldom do we have people here that are headed out hot. So it, it'll definitely be, as I said, it'll definitely be a, a change in methodology for us a little bit. And with some respect to the neighbors and stuff. And, you know, we certainly want to be great partners and neighbors to them. And, and I, and I, I hope that they'll look at the fact that with us moving into town, basically, the, I think the safety and security will really go up in that neighborhood and, and that's a positive that will, you know, we want to push that positive sunshine out versus, you know, hey, they've got a facility here. But I, I can only tell you, you know, we've been here for 62 years. I've been here for five in a few days. I think we've been pretty good neighbors. You know, we've, we've got a residential beside us. We've got commercial beside us. We've got school beside us. And I think we've been good neighbors and I have every anticipation that we'll be good neighbors for these folks too.
Well, and I appreciate your insight that you, that actually you bring up a good point that I would guess that the majority of your calls are gonna be, yeah, lights and sirens are gonna come on somewhere in the county rather than, you know, right, right from the department itself. So you do make a good point that there's probably going to be a minimal amount of kind of noise and light right there at any given time.
Okay. We're more than 30 minutes in. I don't want to cut this off, but we do have other agenda items to get to. Any other questions from commissioners at this time? If not, then what do you want to give, does someone want to give us just a brief preview in terms of where we are? Maybe we go back to Rodney on this. Obviously, this is going to come before us eventually, but what, what are we looking at here?
So at this point, the, the county has submitted an application for special use permit and an application for preliminary site plan approval, which are the two applications that, that they need to pursue at this point. We, we did initial internal technical review of the applications and found that there were some elements that were not complete. Some information items that were not taken, provided, and some details need to be taken care of, both on the application and on the plan, plans. And so the, the applicant's been in the process of, of updating that. We've had some internal conversations with the engineer, the architect about that. My expectation is, is they will be submitting updated special use permit and site plan applications. This is a special use permit process because it is, since it's government office in agricultural district, which is a special use. So they will need, the process will require a public hearing for the special use permit application. And you'll be making a recommendation ultimately to the board of trustees who will, who has final authority over special use permit approvals. So, you know, it obviously would be up to the applicant as to when they submit any updated application materials and plans. But I would not be surprised to have this on the agenda at your February meeting for an initial review. What we would have you do is take, take an initial look at it and decide if you feel it's ready to, to go out for a public hearing. So some of your questions tonight, I think were very good ones. Questions about their outreach to neighbors. I think that, that would be something, as you said, a very good idea to do that well ahead of time. Certainly well before they would receive a public hearing notice. So anyway, so I, my expectation would be is that this, this would be coming up on your agenda for an initial review at the February meeting, as long as they get their documentation in in time.
It sounds like usually, usually we, you know, the, the, although, although the, you know, the site plan is, is normally there and it's normally part of what we look at when we're doing the special use, they are separate decisions and we're normally supposed to divorce them somewhat. It almost sounds like you're saying it's important in this case that the site plan be, be more fleshed out so people can see what they're actually getting, even in the consideration of the special use.
Well, in, in the case of the, the information was missing off the plans, we did note some basic details. But this is a preliminary site plan. It is intended to be more conceptual and character. The information was missing was actually more land use related. Some of the details you heard tonight about the size of the facility, the number of beds, tho- those items were not on the initial set of plans that were presented. And they're required to be. There's a requirement for a detailed use statement that, that gets at that. And, and so it was, it was the type of detail that you're, that you'll need for the special use review that was missing from the site plan. You would be reviewing the special use permit first. The preliminary site plan, the formal review and action on it would come after the, the special use permit action by the board of trustees ultimately.
Okay, very good. So any, any last questions? Seeing none, we'll, we'll thank our guests very much. A fine presentation. I think we all learned a lot and we'll look forward to seeing this in due course.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration and enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. So the next item is updates from Board of Trustees. Commissioner Cody?
I don't have any updates right now. We are looking into getting another board member for the next meeting. So we should have our next planning commission member for the next meeting that we hold.
Okay, sounds good. I assume otherwise they send their regards. Any, any questions for Lisa? Trustees relating? Okay, seeing none. Updates from zoning board of appeals, anything?
We're still on our record run. We're not having any meetings. So as soon as that changes, I'll let you know. But yeah, they, they send their regards.
Okay, fair enough. They, that's, that's a no news is good news sort of thing probably. All right. Well, it's, it's odd that it's this far in, but now we're supposed to approve our agenda. We've already been meeting for almost an hour. So you, you can see the new business items and the old business item. Any, anything else that needs to be on our agenda that anyone is aware of? If not, we can have a motion to approve the agenda and is prepare.
So moved.
I guess I will give the motion to Buckley in the second to Darren. Further discussion? Once again, we'll do voice vote all in favor of approving the agenda. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any, aye, any opposed? Okay, so we'll consider our motion or our agenda approved. Next item is public comment. So this is the portion of the meeting towards the beginning where we invite the public to offer comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anyone in the public who wants to, in, in the attendees who wants to comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda, they're welcome to, to do so. We'd ask you to hit your, hit your raise hand button and we'll, we'll bring you across. And we'll ask you to give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment is open at 7:49. And I'm assuming that the folks that are there are there for agenda items. So seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that back up. Closed at 7:50. So we'll move on to our new business items. The first item is the meeting with the sidewalks and pathways prioritization committee members, three of whom are here. So welcome to you. And we've got, we've got a couple sub items here. Does either, does either Rodney or Peter just want to introduce this a little bit? I mean, I, we're not going to take any actions. I think it's really just a discussion, but do you want to frame it for us?
Sure. This was, this, this meeting, it was something that was brought up by the sidewalk committee and, and of course, the US Plan Commission also liked the idea of meeting together. The sidewalk and pathways prioritization committee is a committee of the planning commission officially. It, it was created by the sidewalk and pathways ordinance, but, but is officially a committee of, of the planning commission. And so having the opportunity to, to talk together is, I think, provides some value, opportunity to both groups in, in looking at the, the issues of pedestrian access and where, where our sidewalk construction priority should be going. The, the two items, as you said, this is not really an action, these aren't action items, but two topics of discussion. The, the first one related to temporary relief policy really came out of the actions that, that you, you took as a planning commission for the two properties on, on Remus Road that asked to have, be returned to status of temporary relief. that asked to have be returned to status of temporary relief. And consideration whether something needs to be altered in the policy or 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 not. And if there are any if there are any other issues with related that policy that should be considered. And then the second item is just, as I said, if any of any of plan commissioners have any ideas or priorities that should be considered long term for sidewalk construction, kind of looking out over the immediate horizon. Where should we be going with with pedestrian improvements? This would be a good time to to have that conversation.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, I don't know what the what the Zoom protocol is, but is there any reason why they can't turn their microphone or their cameras on?
I'm actually I'm actually going to ask each one to do that here. We do have Jeremy McDonald is here. Actually, Matt Mertz is a still really new member of our sidewalk committee. I've asked him to to unmute and also to start his video.
Let's see, so do you want to take the temporary relief issue first? And I remember the discussion. I mean, obviously, we just did it last month, but what Rodney, can you boil down exactly what the that what the issue is? Is there something we need to be considering?
Oh, the the issue, of course, that came up last month was was related to related to state state requirements for off-site improvements, essentially. The the MDOT was requiring these property owners to to construct sidewalk improvements beyond their property and and actually in one case even beyond the township boundary. And that the that led to obviously our discussion that 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 was not a reasonable requirement for us to make. Essentially, we're, in all things we do, we need to ultimately ensure that what we require of an applicant or property owner is reasonably tied to the scope of the the work they're doing on the otherwise. So that's that's what led to allowing them to go back on that temporary relief of status.
Well, is there some feeling that that needs to be added as a as a reason for relief? Criteria for granting relief? I mean, is that is that why that doc the document is before us or one reason?
Well, it was really just to to, it's certainly something considered. Will this come up again? I don't know. You know, obviously, we do have a lot of property, especially in in the west side, that is on the state highway. And so it could come up again. But in general, it's a good time just to 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 discuss the the policy and consider whether there needs to be any changes to it. Or if you're happy with it, wonderful.
Okay, okay.
Mentioned before that, you know, people on corner lots that have to build the sidewalk handicap ramp would be building sidewalk or ramp that's not on their property. I mean, that is pretty typical.
And the issue is basically that they were required to put do this work on the other side of the street. It's one thing to 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 do work within the right of way in front of their house, in front of their building. But this was requiring them to do work on the other side of the of the street, truly off-site. And that's where we're running to to issues.
And I can understand that if you don't want somebody walking off a sidewalk ramp and not have a ramp on the adjacent side of the street to exit the street.
Would would we consider that in in that situation in order to let the property owner construct the sidewalk, would Union Township consider prioritizing money to take care of the other side of the street?
Well, that's really where we where we came down. One of the benefits we had was that that the Economic Development Authority Board had already budgeted funds to to look at putting sidewalks in the area there on on Remus Road. And so of course, that was part of our discussion as well, that 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 allowed that allowed you to simply, you know, for that, that was one of the reasons to say we can put them on temporary relief for then require them to walk in at this point.
But it's more for the next property that comes up and how we'd handle that.
Right. Yeah, the challenge is always timing, because, you know, budget, the budget process takes time. And so if we don't have but funds budgeted for it, you know, we're looking at to having to deal with that budget process and and then the obviously coordinated construction project as well. So it's certainly possible, but but that coordination may be a challenge.
It seems like we need some sort of language in there that says, because I don't want to grant relief just because, I mean, depending on the location, I don't want to grant relief just by virtue of the fact that there needs to be something across the street. I mean, sometimes it makes sense to grant that relief, but I don't want that to be an automatic just because the township hasn't, you know, there needs to be a, because there's the township has to go through a budgeting process. It seems like we could have some sort of language that says that that at least acknowledges that the township may may choose or desire to get involved or something to that effect. I'm not sure how that might look.
I would agree with Commissioner Buckley.
Um, well, maybe I'd I'd turn to our committee members that have joined us. I mean, is there anything you guys would like us to be aware of or that you'd like to get from us from this discussion?
I'll start with that. I know that over the last couple of years of doing this, one of our frustrations is that we're, you know, indicated there's some money set aside for projects, but that money doesn't ever get used. And I always say that I've been around enough budgets and stuff to figure out that if something doesn't get used, it pretty much goes away. And I don't think that's what the end result anybody wants to see. So would that type of coffer fit for something like you're referencing where there's a need to go across the street? That's my first question. My total second unrelated from an earlier topic is are we considering people affected with this COVID? You know, I can think of a couple of restaurants in terms of a waiver if it were to come up. I mean, I would assume that would be pretty common sense, but I'm not sure that we've ever addressed it in terms of a policy yet. Good point.
Well, in terms of spending money, I mean, we, planning commission doesn't spend any money. It's the it's the trustees that spend the money. So I'm assuming that, you know, whether whether sidewalks get put in is is that's the next level up from us, right?
So we did have, we did have some projects that that were planned in twenty twenty that did not get constructed. The funds that were were set aside for that were were carried over into the twenty twenty one budget. And those projects are still planned and budgeted in for twenty twenty one. In addition to that, as I said, the EDA in particular, the money that was budgeted in twenty twenty was general fund money for projects outside of our downtown development authority districts. In addition to that, the Economic Development Authority, which manages projects within the downtown development authority districts right budgeted money for sidewalks along Remus Road in the West EDA. So we do have quite a number of potential projects that are in process for twenty twenty one. Right now, for the twenty twenty projects that were carried over, we're trying to get easements. That was what hung caused a hang up in the projects for that. We didn't have all the easements we needed. And so we're working on that right at this point still to to collect those easements.
How many projects is that, Rodney, that are we're waiting on easements for?
Well, with the the twenty twenty projects involve sidewalks on portions of of East Broomfield and East Bluegrass Road, basically filling in gaps on both roads. And they also involved a section of sidewalk on on South Lincoln Road coming from the Lex Funeral Home north to McDonald Park. And so those those were the areas that we're we're still working on easements for.
Do you anticipate having those easements this year to be able to finish those projects?
That's the goal, yep.
Thank you.
With that Lincoln River project, access to Union Township Hall?
That was the intent, yes. It would bring the sidewalk up to the hall. We talked about bringing it into the park and and ran into some questions about the best route. And so basically, we're bringing it up to the hall at this point, and then we'll look at the bringing it into the park in a future year.
In terms of the COVID, you know, component, is that something we probably should do at a sidewalk committee level to pass that up to be included? For, you know, approval, so to speak.
Yeah, my my thought would be is is that any of the things we talk about tonight with potential changes probably would be best to have the sidewalk committee take a look at them and make a recommendation back.
So Jeremy, it sounds like two two issues. One, coming up with some language to address property across the street in in relation to the first instance. And number two, the COVID issue that you brought up. Does that sound like those two issues to the rest of the commissioners or did I miss one other one?
No, that's, you know. Well, go ahead, Ren, and I'll just finish up with what you say, right?
I'm sorry, I I cut you off there. You know, I I would really, and the planning commissioners have heard me complain about this before in terms of the criteria, but I would really like to see the sidewalk committee address the language in the criteria for granting relief based on number three, the car pedestrian fatality issue. I don't think in any case, somebody should have to die in order to call in a waiver. And quite frankly, there are, I I've always felt like it's a little bit of a it's a very easy criteria to to tack on to to avoid getting having to build a sidewalk just by virtue of the fact that we our city or our our municipality does not have that many car pedestrian accidents, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be trying to improve the safety for pedestrians because somebody hasn't died within a mile of where the sidewalk's going in. I I could see keeping language that, you know, essentially that said that if somebody's on a waiver and there is a pedestrian that passed that is is killed by a motorist, that any relief that they might have would be pulled immediately and that they would have a period of time to do it. But I I I'm going to continue to object to having a criteria that allows somebody to request waiver just because nobody's died in front of their business.
So that could be a, from my perspective, as being heavily involved in that, a not intended how you're reading it. The way we put that in there was, hey, look, somebody may be very well fit all the waivers, but if something like that has happened there, that may signal a call to, hey, this has to be, this is more of a priority because of that. It's not saying that, hey, somebody hasn't died here, I'm good. So it's maybe like you're suggesting some wording changed around, but it's not that it's not meant in the in the way that you expressed it. It was more of saying, hey, look, if if something has happened, then that's just wiped off. You probably need to have a plan B for that. So, and again, keep in mind, it's just one component. It's not saying if you meet that, you're you're you get a pass.
Well, and I appreciate you clarifying that because that does, I mean, what you're expressing does sound more in line, I guess, with kind of what with what I'm thinking too. I just see, I know that when we have, and we've seen it used with some, you know, different applicants in the past, when they say, well, these are the criteria. These are the criteria I'm listing because that that warrant a waiver for me. I I in our applicants will use it as there there hasn't been a death, so that's one of my criteria. And I think the way you're, if I'm hearing you right, I think the way you're saying it is, is that it's really a reason the the relief goes way if if that is to occur, but that's not the sole reason somebody can ask for a waiver is is that they haven't, I just it kind of, I I feel like it reads that way. So maybe a little bit of work on the on the language there might help clarify.
Yeah, I'm sure that could be, because that's, and and to be honest, the one that came up, we all probably aware of the one on oh, just south of the cabin there, yeah, Crawford. That's the one we were talking about, like, hey, look, this is, you know, sometimes we see that area and there's really not a good answer to it because of that feels like it's an area where if it was easy to do, it would probably be done already. But there seems to be some logistical challenges over there. So I'm not sure how to do that because that engineering is not my side. But, you know, that was one of the things we put in there going, hey, look, that's a that's a heavy foot traffic from campus and things like that. So that's kind of
And I think you need
Come up with that one.
Yeah, and I think you need some cooperation from the university on that on that regard too, and that particular location, and that probably complicates the matter even further.
Yep, I would agree.
So if anyone else has anything else on the document, we can discuss that. The other half of this was discussion of long-term look, meaning over the next five years or so, sidewalk construction priorities. The document lists the the kind of existing priorities. You know, Pickard, Crawford, which was just mentioned, Isabella, Remus, Broomfield, Bluegrass, Lincoln. So I guess I'll just open that for discussion as well. If anybody's got any thoughts on on priorities, now would be the time to voice them.
I can start. If anybody else wants to chime in, I just think I'm the longest in the tooth on the committee, so maybe I can give some insight. If anybody wants to add to it, that'd be great. But, you know, some of the things we talked about is it's it's tough not really knowing what authority, if any, you have, which we don't really need it. It's just sometimes we're not sure where our suggestions go in terms of how much weight is put on them. But what we tried to say is, look, if there's some money there every year, let's make sure we're using it up and then let's identify and start closing in things little by little. You're not going to probably have money to close in the areas you want to close in. But if the township has some money budgeted, let's use that money instead of just saying, oh, we didn't have anything this year. And, you know, because, quite frankly, a lot of opposition early on was, okay, well, if we paid for the whole thing, that's not fair to the guy down the road. But on the flip side is, it's never going to happen if that guy has to pay half of it. So that was kind of a an angle to look at, saying, look, if we want some of these main arteries closed in and finished off, you know, we probably the need to use some township exclusive hundred percent funded things to fill in. And in the area we keep coming back to, first is that Bluegrass corridor that so many, you know, restaurants and stores that you know, could probably be filled relatively easy in a couple of years.
Kim Rice is her hand up.
Oh, Kim, go ahead.
Um, so one, you know, and and one of the things that Jeremy pointed out was, you know, the fact that you know, and we hear a lot that the the money is there, so let's spend it. The the thing is, is the projects that we're doing, it takes a while to get everything done so that it can then get to the Board of Trustees. You know, and being on the Board of Trustees, you know, it it takes a while to get to us and that. Unfortunately, with with government, it's not always fast. There's a lot of loopholes you got to get through and that in order to get it to that final step. And then you have to wait because, I mean, there's other projects from from other people to actually get the actual construction process going. And so sometimes we can be sitting there going, oh, it's not done yet. It's not done yet. It's not done yet. You know, we're we're going on a year and it's still not done. But it's it's gotten through several steps. We just haven't seen it yet. And how many steps it has gone through. So I can see where it's kind of frustrating. And that, but but I mean, one of the things we have to keep in mind is it's not an immediate thing, unfortunately. You know, it 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 takes a while to to get through all the loopholes.
What loopholes do we have? I mean, if we want to just knock out things and say, hey, here's what we want to do for twenty twenty two and have, I mean, I I understand what you're saying, that government moves slow, but I also don't understand why government can't be more efficient.
And and I wish, I I I wish I had that answer for you. But, you know, I mean, there's there's things like easements that have to be done. And I mean, there's times that you're waiting over a month for someone to contact you back just on an easement. You know, and it could be two, three, four months. You could be constantly contacting them, trying to get that easement. And it doesn't matter. We cannot do anything until that easement has been reached. And so, I mean, what could have been done during the actual building season now gets put off another year because they can't get the easement and get the approval after that. For, for whatever steps have to go after that, they can't get those done and get someone to build that sidewalk and put in that sidewalk during that construction season because winter's hit. And so it gets put off. So therefore that money, it does not go away. It gets rolled over into the next year and it's earmarked for that specific project.
If, if I may, I, I, I can see Mike and Ryan both have their hands up. I do want to say one thing, even if, even if the township did not have a particular construction in 2020, that doesn't mean we're not prioritizing sidewalks. One of our projects that's on the agenda tonight, that while we have the sidewalk committee here, I want to, I want to call this out because Sam, the Sam's Club Filling Station, they're building a filling station that essentially the south end of Encore Boulevard. And as part of that project, we discussed with the, the applicant, the, the requirements for a sidewalk and we discussed that, that installing the sidewalk only in front of the filling station property, which is little vacant parcel on the southeast side of, of Sam's Club, that that would not meet the requirements of, of the ordinance. And we talked with them about, about partnering with, with Walmart, with the property next door. Of course, their related companies. And to their credit, and I want, I want to really highlight this, to their credit, Sam's Club and Walmart came together. And they came back to us with a plan that's on the agenda tonight for preliminary site plan approval that includes construction of, of the sidewalk all the way up Encore Boulevard to, to nearly to, to the corner there, Bluegrass. Basically it will connect in to the existing sidewalk at the Members First Credit Union. And it will run all the way down Encore Boulevard on that side and around to, to go over to to the, to the filling station off, the office building entrance that they have there, the little employee building. It is a very long stretch of sidewalk. They're also filling in a gap because there is a sidewalk that goes through the Walmart parking lot, but it ends in, in, inside the property and they're filling in that gap. So they'll connect Walmart as well. And it is a project that, that took a lot of work, took a lot of discussion internally. And it took a great deal of work by the applicant to, to facilitate it. But it's, it's an excellent project. It's on the agenda tonight. It's going to add a, a long stretcher sidewalk in that area. And it'd be big benefit. So just because we don't get a township sidewalk in doesn't mean we're not working on these things all the time. So we did have, Mike had his hand up first and then Ryan, and now Doug has his hand up as well.
Correct. So Mike.
Thank you, Phil. I guess in related to where Jeremy was going. I'm not sure how budgeting is done in our local government for projects. A lot of this that we're talking about is front-end loading and to be able to do construction. And I know we, we lock up funds for estimate of the physical work. But is, is the budgeting costs for the design and engineering, the, and the permitting? Is that all come out of the budget also, I assume? And if that is the case, can we lock up the capital dollars needed for construction and still do front-end loading on the next priority? Instead of waiting to finish one project, move on to the next project? Do we have the resources to be able to do that? Because all we do is lose time if we do not construct. So I, I just wonder if, if our local government could rethink about maybe multitasking and do front-end loading, spending estimates, so we can lock up dollars for that also. So that we can continue. Because I look at the map, we have plenty of priority that doesn't have sidewalk. And I hate to see a calendar year go without spending capital dollars. We know it happens. But we should continue to move on to the next priority.
I, I would encourage you to be thinking longer term. Part of the, what we're trying to do here by looking a little over the horizon, we, we have near-term priorities. So 2020, 2021 projects. But part of the reason for looking over the horizon is actually to do what Mike, what you said, and start to look at essentially a capital improvements program for sidewalks that goes out five or six years. And, and in order to do that, we really do have to look beyond our immediate budget needs. The budgets will happen that the board has been great. They are, they are strongly supportive of, of sidewalk program. I don't expect that to change. As I said, the board of trustees has done, has been very consistent in, in supporting sidewalk work. And so our, our priority then is to develop a longer-term plan. So that, that we can be looking at this from, from a, in a more, in a more efficient way, as you said.
I fully agree with what you're saying, but every year, if we move the priority to the next year, we never realize the long-term goal.
2020 is what it was. As you know, we had, COVID was a disaster. It, it made a hash out of the construction season. It made a hash out of a lot of things. And so that is what it is. We, we're not moving things on. Part of the reason I'm here is to try to, to avoid that. As I said, we've gotten some things done. I, as I said, I, I want to give kudos to the folks at Sam's Club and their partners with Walmart because just because we're not going to construct that sidewalk doesn't mean it's an important success. They, they really have stepped up to to put that long stretch in. For a project, of course, Walmart was built in 2005 and they're coming back and doing that now. That's a big deal.
Okay, Ryan is next, then Doug.
Um, I, I just have, well, I got a couple of things and while I've got the Mike, so to speak, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll bring both of the issues up. I, I kind of see that the issue that we're discussing right now is more of a communication issue. It sounds like there's money that's been budgeted for some projects that we've committed to. There have been, there, there's some bureaucracy and some acts of God that have gotten in the way of, you know, what we're, what we're trying to accomplish in the, in the short term. But I, I do understand the frustration there too. It seems to me though, that on some, some level, whether it's coming from the board or coming from staff, that we can have a running list of, you know, where the money has been committed, kind of where we are in the process and that it is visible for people to see. And, and if we stack on projects on that in the future in 2021 or 2022, as long as the money is budgeted and we can see where that is in the process, even though we're kind of front-loading right now and, you know, I, I would expect at some point that work to start. And then even though there's a lag, there'll be a continuous kind of number of projects in the pipeline. So to me, that sounds like more just of a communication issue that we can't fix. We just have to figure out, you know, who can assemble that list and kind of keep everybody abreast of what's happening. The other issue that, that I would like to, you know, ask the sidewalks committee for their input on is that I know that Rodney was asking about, well, this is a time to talk about where our priorities lie. And, and this is through no fault of the sidewalks and pathways committee themselves, but I, I don't know if you've ever noticed that the sidewalks and pathways committee is called the sidewalks and pathways committee, but we don't talk about pathways at all in the document whatsoever. And we don't even have a definition at the end of the document where we define other stuff. We don't even have a definition for a pathway. But what I would like to see is, in addition to sidewalks prioritization, I would like to see what the, what the committee's recommendations might be for pathways and, and some information maybe about how we might leverage pathways differently than, than we, than we're leveraging sidewalks, because I think that's, you know, in terms of non-motorized transportation, I think that's an important part of what we're trying to accomplish here. I know that when we were, we went through several meetings talking about, you know, the reconstruction and the pathways or the, the sidewalk that would be either be placed in front of Riverwood and not be replaced in front of Riverwood. There was, you know, a lot of conversation about, well, it doesn't connect too much, but you know, we have a ring road that's going in, you know, when we're going to link into Broomfield and stuff and, and maybe something like Broomfield, just as an example, is, is a priority, not necessarily for sidewalk, but for pathway. Because there are some large businesses out there. So just a couple of observations on the current conversation as well as, you know, if the committee is looking for something to do in 2021, you know, how, how we talk a little bit more about pathways in that whole process and not just sidewalks.
Okay, we've got Doug next and then Jeremy.
Yeah, I was just going to make mention to Ms. Rice, and I think Rodney had mentioned as well, if and, and even Ryan, I think, sorry, Commissioner Buckley mentioned that if there is this lag, granted, let's 2020, let's just say that that's not normally going to happen. But if there is this lag, as Ms. Rice said, that it's going to, it takes a while to do a lot of these things, then our projects for 2022, we should be working on right now. Let's get all the easements. Let's get all the stuff in 21. And, and maybe that's what you've done and maybe 2020, like I said, is an anomaly. I, I don't know. That's why I'm just asking. Is that, and maybe that's what typically works is that, hey, we know that these take a little while. Here's our projects for 22. Here, let's going to start, get all these easements, whatever the stuff that we need. Now, that way, come 22, in May of 22, we're ready to start doing that project. So you've got 15 months to get, to get all that stuff sorted out. I, I don't know. Maybe you're already doing that. I, I don't know. Just, I guess food for thought.
To some extent, we're, I'm looking for, that's looking right now for what, what are the priorities for 2022, 2023? What, what are you interested in? What are, where are the areas that, that we should be looking for constructing new sidewalks or pathways in those out years?
Well, and, and, and maybe, maybe the reason the ones that didn't get done in 2020, like you said, if they're strictly COVID-related, sounds like they might be COVID-related and some easement-related things, then, you know, sounds like we're going to try to rectify those the first part of this year. Hopefully we can get those done this summer. In the meantime, we're actively pursuing what we're doing for 22 at the same time. That way, come 22, we're not trying to sort it out at the beginning of 22. It's, it's been all sorted out. But again, like I said, you know, Rodney and Ms. Rice and Commissioner Buckley, that maybe that's all already happening. Just maybe not to my knowledge, that's all.
Uh, Jeremy?
Uh, I will say, we had one, so a, a lot of our early on attention was on establishing the rules that we came up with that we passed on. And then I remember a certain time where I can't remember, Steve, I think it was from Row, he came in and gave us a big presentation about pathways. But there was all these questions, there seemed to be more questions than answers. So I don't even know where you would put a pathway and not a sidewalk, you know, or if there's, if we can't get small stretches of sidewalk are done. I'm not sure. I was thinking we were ready to jump into pathways. But again, they were talking about bringing that Shepherd one in, but then they weren't sure because it was going to connect on the south end of town, but then they were supposed to go back to CMU and maybe bring that through town. But then they had to get it back to the east, get on the other side of Remus Road and that overpass. So that's where that was left as, as far as I recall, and I don't remember that we've ever been, you know, that part's ever been answered. So that's all we have for that, you know, in terms of if you guys have some stuff for us to look at, no problem, we'd be happy to do it. I just don't have a lot of familiarity with it.
Somewhere there's a, there, there's a, there's a map, right? Isn't there a map of the township that has the, 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 you know, the highest, the existing priority shown in a certain color? And then there's, you know.
There's a lot of maps.
Yeah.
A lot of maps.
Yeah, there is, yes.
But I think, I think that would be something that, you know, I think most of us would probably benefit from looking at that again and, and probably giving that some thought. I'm, I'm again, looking at the clock here. It's almost eight 30. I don't want to, I don't want to cut this short, but I also want us to keep in mind that we still have actual or other agenda items to get to. So you know, we've, I think we've made some progress. We, we've clarified some things on the on the provisional relief document. But could I, could I ask that that, that that priority doc or diagram be, be circulated to us and, and perhaps put on a future agenda? And then if we have specific suggestions, we can, we can relay them to the committee.
Sure.
Anything, oh, so we've got a couple more. So we've got Ryan again, and then we'll go to Kim.
In fairness, I think Kim had her hand up first, but I'll just say from a, from a commissioner standpoint, I would like to keep this, if possible, I like to keep this, you know, when we have a, a lighter agenda, it would be nice to keep this on our agenda because the sidewalks committee does need some assistance and direction from us and, and maybe we can push through some recommendations to the trustees, once we do kind of get what we need back from the sidewalks committee. So my, my final observation would just be that, let's hope that we're not sitting here in 2022, having our, our, our second meeting. Let's you know, potentially, if we have a light agenda, this is one of those types of things we can toss back on to make sure that the planning commission is giving appropriate guidance for the committee as well.
It'd be great.
Okay. Kim, did you have anything to add?
Uh, yeah, um, I just wanted to let you guys know, um, the budget actually goes through and lets you know like this, what amount of money is actually set aside and the projects that it is earmarked for. So if you go onto, I, I believe it's actually on our website, correct, Jennifer? Yes, okay, yeah. So if you go to our website, you can actually look at our 2021 budget and it has under sidewalks and non-motorized pathways. It'll have everything right there. Everything's under the general ledger. So it should be all right there. So you guys are able to look and see, okay, what projects are, are planned for 2021 and how much is earmarked for that? So just kind of FYI.
If, if you would like to see it, if you go on the, you, you need to touch your website, go under departments and accounting. And you'll see there the finance director and down at the bottom, you'll have the budget information.
Okay, Alex?
Yeah, who at the township is charged with getting easements and seeing these sidewalk projects pushed through?
That's me. One thing, the township has a lean staff, you know, you might, some people, there's, we have a number of people working for us, but we have a lean staff and so we all wear multiple hats and, and certainly our public works director has some involvement in certain elements of this as well, but, but I'm the one that is charged with hunting down these easements and trying to get these projects moving forward.
Okay, any final comments from anyone?
I just wanted to let everybody be aware, since we have the planning commission and the sidewalk committee, then in addition to the planning commission still not being whole, missing, having one vacancy, the sidewalk and pathways committee does have an opening. It is the at-large position. It was previously held by Connie Bills, who is on the board of trustees now. And a nice thing about the at-large position is it doesn't have to be a township president. So if anybody on the sidewalk committee or planning commission knows anybody who would be interesting or interested to apply, they don't have to be a township resident.
Well, we don't currently have any applicants, is that correct? All right. So yeah, if you know anyone, encourage them to apply. All right. So thanks, everybody for, for that discussion. So we'll move on. And we'll move to our, we have two preliminary site plans that we're looking at tonight. First one is PSPR 20-02, Sam's Club Filling Station, which was just mentioned a little while ago. And so I'll let Rodney introduce the project and if you want to beam the, the representative across, that's fine too. I assume one of our attendees is here for that purpose.
I will start by getting Mr. Moore head in the right direction. Keith Moore will be joining us. So thank you. This, this project is before you is, it's Sam's Club Filling Stations. As I said, this is a preliminary site plan approval. So the first step in the, in the site plan process. The filling station is a special use in the, in Uh, the filling station i- is a special use in the, in the B five zone, zoning district. Uh, but a special use permit was approved for a filling station all the way back in 2005. It was, but it was not constructed at that time. Uh, so that's why it's before you now, um, uh, for, uh, for the preliminary site plan approval. Uh, I already mentioned the, uh, the unique element of this, of the, the additional sidewalk construction, uh, uh, all the way up, uh, through the Walmart property. Uh, that is a, as I said, that's a unique feature of this particular project that that, uh, very pleased to be able to, to highlight, uh, and and, uh, glad that they're doing it. The, uh, the, the project itself, uh, is pretty straightforward in terms of access and and, uh, in, in the filling station details. Uh, I can go over those, uh, the details of the report as we move forward.
Okay. Um, so, uh, I guess I'll, uh, invite the, uh, applicant representative, Mr. Moore, if there's anything you'd like to, uh, tell us about this and, uh, uh, also, obviously, if we have questions, uh, we'll have you answer those, and you're welcome to turn your camera on if you like.
Uh, unfortunately, I do not have a camera on, on my desktop here at the office, and I don't have one, so I won't be able to do that, but, um, my name is Keith Moore. I'm with, uh, Carlson Consulting Engineers. We're, um, the, the civil engineering consultant, working on behalf of Sam's Club for this project. As Rodney said, I've worked with him and Peter, um, over past few months on this project, trying to get to, to something that works, uh, for us all. Um, with, I, I think the, the big, uh, point is, is I, it seems tonight is, is obviously sidewalks throughout the community is a, a big push, uh, push, so we were able to, to finally get that, to, uh, get it resolved, where we have something that I think everybody was, uh, was finally able to set on, so. Um, as Rodney said, we're extending the sidewalk from the proposed fueling station all the way up to basically the northeast corner of the existing Walmart. Um, but, uh, regarding the fueling station itself, it's a Sam's Club branded fueling station. It'll have, um, six or eight pumps, which is sixteen fueling positions. Um, off to the side of it, there's three underground storage tanks, and then there's a small, uh, it's just under two hundred square foot service building. Um, there, there won't be any products sold there other than fuel. The, the service building is really just meant to be a, uh, kind of a, a place for the attendant to, to get out of the weather and also to store the, the necessary components of the fueling station. Um, there as well. So, uh, you have to be a Sam's Club member to use the fueling station. Um, so really, other than that, I'm just kind of here to, if there's any questions or comments, it's, I've received a staff report. Don't have any concerns with it, and assuming there's no major unforeseen issues that are arise tonight, we'll be ready to submit for our final, so it'll, uh, to hopefully be on the, the next month's planning commission meeting for final approval.
Uh, very good, thank you. So, um, uh, project is open for questions from planning commissioners? So would there be any, uh, any sales of anything else, like at a lot of filling stations, you see salt or or wood chips or, or this or that, any of that stuff?
No, sir, just fuel. Um, you can only pay at the pump. I, I don't think that the attendant can't handle any transactions um, by hand, I guess, unless maybe there's some major issue, but generally, you all, that everything's done there at the pump, and they don't keep any merchandise, um, in stock at the service building.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. I am looking for the trash receptacle. Did I, or am I not seeing it?
There isn't one, uh, shown on this development. Again, since this is kind of a ancillary use to the Sam's Club, um, they, they don't have a separate trash receptacle or dumpster enclosure, anything like that. They'll actually take their, the trash, the, the little bit of trash that this site generates and, uh, take it back to the existing, uh, dumpster, or it's the, um, trash compactor that's at the, uh, Sam's Club itself.
You know, Doug has his hand raised.
Hi, Doug.
Uh, yeah, just quick question for, I'm not sure Keith would know the answer. Any, any reason why they wouldn't have maybe done the fueling station back in 2005 when it was approved, or just maybe it was a future item? Would you know the answer to that?
Yes, um, well, I, I, I just know some from, from working with Walmart and Sam's Club for many years now. They, back in 2005, they were really just kind of getting their feet wet in the, the fuel offering. Um, that's something that they were just kind of testing out and wanted to, to plan for it on their new sites. Um, but it wasn't something they were fully ready to really commit to at that time. Um, since then, it has become a, really, uh, one of the key components to their, their, uh, business model. Um, they, you know, any new Sam's Club that they build today, uh, has to include fuel. It, it's just, that, that's what they say moving forward. Um, so, uh, along with this, when I, I'm working with them, where they're going back and, and adding fuel to, to many of their other locations across the country, because they realize it's something that, um, it is basically becoming an expectation. Their members, you know, you pay for the same membership at this club, whereas if you pay, you know, add, if you have another local club somewhere else. So people expect to receive the same services if they're paying the same fee. So that's something that they're trying to commit to, to provide all the same services at every location that they can.
Nope, that's perfect. That, that was my assumption, but I appreciate the explanation.
So you say that, uh, that only members will be able to buy gas at the station, is that right?
That's correct.
I will, I guess I'll admit to not being a member, but how does that work? Does the, 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 uh, do they have to use a Sam's charge to pay for it, or is there credit card information stored in such a way that someone who wasn't a member who tried to to insert their card, wouldn't, it wouldn't take it?
Yes, before the, the pump will basically turn on, you have to scan your Sam's Club membership to activate it.
Okay. Uh, so Mike and then, uh, and then, and then Ryan. I guess, uh, Mike or Ryan, excuse me, or no, so. All right, you, you on, you on, raised your hand, but Mike has a comment.
Uh, signage is canopy and building mounted, is that correct?
That's correct. There, there, we're not currently proposing any new, uh, pylon signs or anything like that. Um, occasionally, they do come in, you know, later on, and possibly want to add fuel readers to the existing signs. Um, but that, that'll be something kind of handled under a separate submittal if, if they do decide to, to add that in.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan?
I, I have probably admittedly a dumb question that is probably not even germane to this site plan, but I, I'm just curious, Keith, if you have a answer to it. Um, given the fact, I've been on the planning commission for, uh, maybe four years, and and this might be the second or third, um, filling station that we've done. Um, given the location of this, this filling station and kind of where things are headed, um, from a technological standpoint, is it possible i- in the, in the future, uh, with a filling station like this to add um, electrical charging, uh, as well for vehicles, or is that not even something that's kosher or possible around gasoline? I'm just kind of curious, in the future, when people are looking at filling stations, wh- what the planning looks like for that, or if there's any tie-in whatsoever at all.
Sure, um, we have started to, to see a, a little more question similar to that, that is, we're, you know, looking to, to add these fueling stations at other locations. And I'll be honest, it, it's usually, um, there's another, uh, representative that actually works directly for Sam's, that, that he's much more knowledgeable on that, so. Uh, this is the first time that I've, uh, I guess, answered the question without him being there to, to kind of shipper me through it, but usually, um, i- it locations where, you know, electric vehicle charging is, is wanted, they want to do that separate from the fuel, you know, they, they would look at putting it in some of the existing parking spaces on site, just because the, the dwell time is much different. You know, you're looking at three to five minutes to get gas versus, uh, I believe it's maybe fifteen to twenty or more, um, to, to, to fuel up or recharge your electric vehicle. So that's something where you would, you know, plug it in, walk into the club, do your shopping, come back out, and, and and so you, you'd be there much longer. So, um, it's something that they have implemented a- at a few locations, but it's my understanding that that's more where they pair up with a third party that reaches out to them, is looking for a location um, that, that they need to kind of, you know, fill in the holes across the map.
That makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that, that, um, I, I, I just always wonder what, what that looks like, uh, you know, if you're doing a site plan, you're talking about, you know, potentially having to expand, but that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Um, I just want to take this opportunity, because I, I highlighted in my notes. This is a preliminary site plan. I just want to read that, um, that, uh, from our zoning ordinance, approval of a preliminary site plan. Uh, if, if the planning commission approves one, it's indicating its general acceptance of the proposed layout of the building, streets, drives, parking areas, and other facilities and areas. So, just to remind you in terms of what we're actually looking at at this point. Um, so, other questions for the, uh, for the applicant? Uh, if not, we can have a motion to approve if someone is so moved. Again, you have in your, uh, packet, I think, the, the, the language.
We've included, uh, rec- a recommendation, three conditions. These are uh, all more or less housekeeping items, or just a few items of information that we're missing. A few details that need to be corrected, and then some application information related to, uh, uh, the, uh, the state of Michigan permits for, for the underground storage tanks. Because this site is less than two thousand feet from our municipal wells, only slightly less. Um, there are some additional requirements from the state that, that we asked them to demonstrate on the, on the final site plan that they've met. So we've asked you that, and any motion of approval would include those three conditions.
Okay. This is on page seventy-one of your packet.
Like to make a motion to approve with conditions. PSPR twenty dash zero two preliminary site plan for, from Carlson Consulting Engineers for the construction of the new Sam's Club Filling Station on parcel number fourteen dash zero two six dash thirty dash zero zero one dash zero seven, located on approximately sixteen point eight acres west and north of Encore Drive in the southwest quarter of section twenty-six in the B five highway business zoning district. Finding that, uh, the December third, twenty twenty site plan can comply with the applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary site plan approval, including sections fourteen point two point P uh, and fourteen point two point S. Subject to the following conditions. One, provide the missing items of required information on the final site plan per section fourteen point two point P. Two, update the parking, exterior lighting, sidewalk easement, and landscaping details on the final site plan to conform to zoning ordinance requirements. Three, as part of the final site plan submittal, provide the completed hazardous substance reporting form and eagle permit checklist form from the application materials and documentation of compliance with state of Michigan requirement for underground fuel tanks located less than two thousand feet from municipal water.
So the motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Fuller, further discussion?
I really like the location, uh, being down on the south end of town with the new uh, access from the south end to the Encore, uh, Sam's Club Walmart area. I think that's gonna defer a lot of traffic that could potentially be up at the north end on that light, so I think this is a good location.
Very good. Other comments?
I'm just, I, I, I'm just curious about the, uh, following site plan, um, approval, uh, what the timing is for kind of start and completion, if they, there's an understanding of what that might look like, Keith?
Um, I, I know we still have to go through billing permits, and it'll, after we make the, the final, um, the goal is, i- is to get it built, you know, this year. Um, we have some, some other outstanding approvals we have to go through, since we are in a, a commercial shopping center. There's some um, ECR approvals, you know, easement covenants restrictions with the, the other anchors and other developments that surround us. Um, everybody wants to make sure that, that they're all happy with the proposed improvement, so. Um, it's long and short, it is, we're, we're wanting to get started as soon as we can, uh, to, to beat winter coming up next year, because it, it does sneak up on you quick whenever you have a little delays here and there.
Uh, Mike?
Another comment I'd like to say is, I, I really appreciate the fact that they're gonna tackle the sidewalks all the way to the north, but I think there's an opportunity for, uh, reducing some of the bear, the site barriers at the, uh, mid entrance to Sam's Club and Walmart. Uh, it's very hard to see both ways when you're trying to exit that, uh, or that, uh, exit, uh, the parking lot. And I think with the sidewalk going through there, that's gonna help, but they should further pull back some of their, um, uh, greenery.
They're, they actually have on their plan removal of, of several trees, uh, in that area, the, uh, uh, those trees, you, you, I looked back at the two thousand five site plan, because I wondered how those trees got there. They, they really did make a lot of sense. And it, it came down to a, a change in the driveway location that was required, I think, by the county, uh, sort of at the last minute, and, and it didn't get coordinated with the landscaping. But as part of this project, they are going to be removing some of those barriers, visual barriers.
Thank you.
Mike, where, where you, is that the area on the site that you were referencing? Because I was gonna bring that up, but are you, are you talking about uh, the entrance further north of that?
It's the entrance further north than that, because I believe the sidewalks, the new sidewalks going to go up there. And so this would be, uh, mid property, so I think it's almost in between Walmart and Sam's Club. I think it's that entrance. It's not the north entrance to Walmart, it's the, yeah.
It's the one where I think you go one way, you go to Sam's, the other way, you go to Walmart.
Correct, correct.
Because I'll, 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 yeah, we can take a look at that. I didn't, um, look at that. I, I did catch the trees further south, and, and they're gonna be taking those out, but, uh, we can take a look at, um, further north there.
It, it's definitely a safety issue.
Other comments, discussion? Motion is on the floor to approve the preliminary site plan with the stated conditions. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, then I'll ask for a roll call, please.
LaBelle?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Squitrito?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
And Darren?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll look forward to seeing the, the final version. And we'll proceed to, uh, our second preliminary site plan. This is PSPR twenty dash nineteen. Uh, the den at Broomfield. And so I'll let Rodney, uh, perform his magic with, uh, the applicant representatives will, will eject one and import the other.
So, uh, everybody should have, uh, a copy of our report, date January eleventh. Uh, this is for, uh, uh, the Den of Broomfield, which is a mixed-use building, uh, two mixed-use buildings. Uh, commercial on the, uh, the Uh, commercial on the uh the street level and uh re- residences above uh uh levels above. This is also a preliminary site plan, so uh they they will be coming back to you. You'll see it again after this, but uh it's a preliminary site plan stage. This uh project is a is now our new zoning ordinance, a a use allowed by right. Uh, subdued to site plan approval in the B five district. In the old ordinance, it was a special use permit. Uh, process, but but that was changed in the new ordinance. Uh, overall, here again, similar to the other uh the previous project, there are some. Uh, items of information that that were uh were missing, but generally the plan is is certainly sufficiently complete for your review. Um, the uh we found in our in our report that the project can meet all the requirements, including the requirements of section six point two four. Which is mixed use buildings, uh subject to those the the details being taken care of. And we would note that this. Is the first project coming before you that uh since the adoption of our master plan that that directly would achieve the the goals of the master plan. For the Bluegrass area. Uh, so so with that, happy to answer your questions as we go along.
Okay, thank you and welcome, Tim. Uh, and I'll turn it over to you if there's uh anything you'd like to say about your project.
Um, well, first, I'd like to say we're we're learning the new ordinance. So it's it it's going to take some time to try and make sure that that when we submit, we've got. All the I's dotted and T's crossed, so. Um, I went through Rodney's report. I I have some. I would say some technical questions that I I need to go over with him before we resubmit. Um, just questioning what what's going to be needed for cross access, things of that sort. Um, but I don't, didn't see anything in here that uh we were, we would be objecting to. Um, so I, as far as the the project, this is something that we have. Uh, talked to the planning commission about for about a year and a half now. And it's uh it's finally coming around. We're hoping that uh we're going to hit this uh spring, early summer. Construction schedule. Uh, the site is a clay site. Ideally, you start that site in about the first of June. And so that's that's what we're hoping our our construction schedule will be. Currently, the owners are working with the architect, getting uh the building plans around and together. And uh for our next metal for final site plan, we will have uh all the floor plans. And uh much more detailed architecturals. Uh, so with that, if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is this is this a a descendant of the same project that you were doing all those calculations with about the? The the uh, what was it? Kind of uh. Seeing how it could fit under the old zoning ordinance and whether it would need a uh a re- revision and all that sort of thing?
We started out looking at it, um whether it be a variance or a text amendment. Uh, we we looked at a number of different things because the zoning ordinance, as it was written, really didn't uh allow. For this development to to occur. The the old ordinance, you were allowed four units. So if I had ten thousand square foot uh commercial space on the bottom, I was looking at twenty-five hundred square foot units. And that's really not what uh what the market was demanding. So I I do think you're you're correct. In in remembering that, yes, we ran through a lot of things. I wrote several documents that came to the planning commission. But in the end, uh it it was suggested and we followed the suggestion to told off until the ordinance was adopted. And then then come back.
Hmm, okay. Um, before I let everyone else in, I wanted to ask a question about the uh. Uh, the entrance and exit on Broomfield.
Yes.
I I just want to understand, is is one of these in only and the other one out only or are they?
That is, that's correct.
Okay.
Um, it's right in, right out. Um, that was part of the road commission's review. We had a full access. When we first proposed, these plans law have been back and forth with. The Drain Commission and the Road Commission um several different times. Whoops. I don't know if it.
He's sharing the plan, sharing the plan view.
Okay, but that entrance is uh the recommended entrance from from the road commission's review.
Okay, so then, so then if I'm heading, if I'm heading west on Broomfield. And I want to get into this, then I have to turn on to Sweeney and come in that way?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. All right, and they don't have any concerns with how close the 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 entrance uh eastbound is to 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 Sweeney? Of course, Sweeney doesn't have a light at that point yet, right?
Doesn't have a light yet. Uh, I think that's a place that you're going to see a light in the future.
Uh, okay.
But uh, but distance wise, no, we met all the distance requirements. And in fact, we do have. Uh, review and approval from the road commission on on the set of plan.
Um, Mike?
I'd like to piggyback off what uh Commissioner Squatito was getting at. Is there signage requirements with that entrance and exit off of Broomfield?
There are four uh do not enter signs and and that, which will be detailed on the final site.
Okay, thank you. And then a couple of sidewalk questions. Thank you for detailing this out. The sidewalk along uh Broomfield, I I don't know if this is to scale, but I'm going to ask a dumb question. Is it far enough off of Broomfield that two lanes of snow isn't going to constantly? Fill up the sidewalk or is it uh, does it need to be pushed towards the parking lot?
It is where the sidewalk is to be in accordance with the township ordinance, one foot inside the. The right of way. What I like to see it slide back, I would not be against it.
So so the ordinance uh requires that when there is sufficient right of way in this kind of a circumstance. You you, all you need to do to move the sidewalk is to propose an easement.
Grant an easement, okay?
Yeah, because uh and that's this, as we were talking earlier with the sidewalk committee. Uh, this whole stretch of Broomfield and Bluegrass, both of them have very little right of way. Uh, outside of the pavement for the road. And so it uh, yes, I would recommend the sidewalk be moved back and simply provide an easement for it.
Yep, that's that's not a problem.
One other sidewalk related question, Tim. Uh, is there a reason along Sweeney that you stopped the sidewalk where you did?
Along Sweeney?
Here.
We're just past the east entrance.
We were curbing the entrance. So when you curb that entrance, you're going to want to put the dub downs in. You want to put the ramp in. And you usually put the first flag of sidewalk on that ramp. Uh, that's not on our property, but it's coming across an easement area that is shown in the condominium documents.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this this is the property.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Tim.
Uh, Doug?
Um, yeah, just a question for maybe Rodney or Peter. Um, we've got commercial property in the city and there's a. A rule, I'm not sure if it's called a rule, but we have to have the sidewalks cleared within twenty-four hours or twelve to twenty-four hours of a snow. So sometimes we clear it and then the plows go by and cover it and then we got to clear it again. Is there something like that in the township? Do we have a rule like that? There is, I I don't know if it's exactly twenty-four hours, but there is in the sidewalk ordinance about maintaining. And uh snow removal on the sidewalks. Hey, is that it? Is that enforced? Uh, we we basically have to get a complaint for it. Uh, we don't have anybody that monitors it, so. Okay, yeah, because the city has tons of time on their hands and they they go out, they enforce that um because they don't have anything else to do. So we we know that. Um, so yeah, so that would be, that would be advantageous, um, Tim. To to be able to move that back so you don't have that issue that we have in the city.
Yep.
Perfect.
Uh, Alex?
Yeah, on this corner lot, we have that same instance where on the southeast side of Sweeney in here. We're dumping people out into Sweeney with no place to go on the other side of the street.
Um. I didn't follow you, Alex. What uh?
On the east side of Sweeney?
Yes.
You have a handicap ramp walking towards the east. He gets out in the middle of Sweeney Street and can't get up the curb to do anything. On the other side of the street.
Other side.
On the east side of Sweeney.
There there's actually a sidewalk on the east side.
East side, yeah.
It's not shown on the plan, but they.
Oh. Okay, there is a sidewalk there.
Yeah, but just to touch on on what Commissioner Fuller was saying, I think we 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 addressed that in one of the previous topics earlier tonight. You know, that I I don't, I don't know why that would be a requirement for a property owner to do that. It's not even their property.
I think that's a state road issue. If it's not a state road, then it wouldn't be that rule anymore. That would be a township or a county issue then. It's because uh twenty is a state road that that uh rules in effect. Isn't that correct, Rodney?
That that is correct. And I uh I would assume the county road commission probably has something similar. Uh, but it's basically th- they have control over the right of way. So whatever rules they set for work in the right of way. We have to simply follow them properly and has to follow them.
Yep, no, good point. Thanks for Commissioner, thanks Commissioner Lab. I didn't think of that.
Um, so how many, how many stories are these buildings?
These are three-story buildings.
And first floor is entirely commercial or no?
That's correct, other than the stairways to go up.
And there, the uh the living spaces on the second and third floor are rentals or condos?
Uh, they are rentals.
Okay. Uh, Mike?
Is it residential to the west of this property or?
Uh, that is the jewelry store.
Okay, thank you. How about to the east?
To the east is the um, it's a but state or federal building.
Social Security Commission.
Security, yeah, thank you. So there's no proposed screening between. To the properties and I'm only getting at this is going to be a twenty-four hour living area.
Yeah. Will there be landscaping? Yes, but since there is no requirement. Just as soon as it's on an approved plan, then it becomes a requirement.
Yeah, so landscaping is a final site plan detail. So you you'll sometimes see landscaping of the preliminary site plan. But it's not required until the final site plan.
Right, and so I, yeah, I was only looking at it from a headlight shining in windows standpoint, so. Uh, not required, so, thank you.
Other questions? Or comments?
I have a question, just m- more in relation to the motion. Um, if we were to motion to it. Uh, for approval with conditions, um is the uh moving the Broomfield sidewalks uh out of the right of way uh through an easement? Is that something that should be included as an additional condition condition or is that something that's just voluntary by the applicant?
Uh, you you certainly could add it as a condition. Uh, you could put a phrase it if you wished in in the form of a a request. Uh, or it essentially encourage the applicant to consider uh type language if uh that would be a reasonable condition. He, the applicant can put them in the right way as they've demonstrated. Uh, so I'm not sure that we could require it, but uh but you sure can encourage.
Ryan, we'll be moving that.
I gather there's uh a need to merge, combine the three parcels?
Well, you can't combine condominium units. It will still, the legal description will still be unit four, five, six. Um, there is no way unless you redo the condominium to actually combine them. So uh it's not, it's not like a meets and bounds description. Are they tied together because of the the approval?
Hmm.
Yes, they are tied together that way, but uh you can't, can't combine them. And you can't combine a planted lot with another planted lot without replating.
And so. I I don't have. Rodney's expression, new development parcel is is some sort of, well, go ahead, you can explain.
I it, no, Tim is is absolutely right on on that, that and that that's an item that that I wasn't thinking of as we were looking at this. I I uh when I wrote that item, it wasn't thinking about the fact this was a side condominium. Uh, you you can leave off the fourth condition because he is, he's absolutely right. You can't easily combine them back together again.
Okay. All right, other, uh, Mike?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Tim, how many extra parking spaces are there? Because I look at this from a snow removal standpoint and there doesn't look like, well, headache, but.
Uh, Rodney and I are going to go, that's one of the things that we're going to go through because uh the the new ordinance is is a little bit different. I think the way the ordinance and then the way that it was written up is you would have one parking space. Or a single bedroom unit, not point seven. And if you had multiple bedroom units, then it's point seven per bedroom. Is that correct, Rodney?
We we can talk over the details of that. I I could look. Uh, but what I will say is this, that the what what our our uh. Report was talking about is just getting the numbers right for the minimum required. That doesn't mean that that Tim can't add parking spaces because in their opinion, they they're going to need more than the minimum required. Uh, so it just appeared to to us in reviewing this that that there was more parking than was necessary. Um, I also don't mind the idea of uh if 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 Tim uh wishes to pursue it, the final site plan. And showing the additional parking as bank parking where it's not constructed unless it's needed. Um, because we just rather not see, you know, additional paving if it's not, if it's not necessary.
Yep.
So. For me, it's, how many spaces do you lose in a heavy snow winter? Then you don't have parking to accommodate your residents and the retail business, so. Um, you know, we do a minimum parking, but you lose it in our winter time season if you have no place to put the snow.
Well, if you, if looking at at Rodney's report, um. If if we're looking at the the required parking and we utilize. One space for every two hundred square feet of usable, non-residential on the first floor. Uh, I've got a lot more parking than what the the minimum requirement's going to be.
Right.
However, I'm going to chew up forty plus spaces just on those residential. And which is going to basically leave the uh from dumpster to dumpster. That parking in between there is going to be uh primarily your your residential. And that leaves the the parking encircling the building. Now you start taking your staff that are at these businesses. And you start chewing up the parking spaces that are close to the building. You need to have some place. For the for the staff parking. So I'll work with the, the doctors and the, the architect, um, seeing if, if we can reduce some of, some of this. This is, this was the, the target that they were shooting for. So. And this was based on there, they had a market study done that, that looked at everything from, the look of the building to the, uh, how it would be accessed. Uh, the internal walkways in between, uh, you know, and, and that walkway that, that runs between the buildings, that's where there's, there's a requirement for the bicycle spaces for, for residents. There's supposed to be 40, one space for, for each. That's where those, those bike racks are going to end up residing in between the, the buildings and be sheltered in between the buildings there. But, uh, I'll, I'll talk with the, the doctors again on that and see whether or not, part of that back parking lot, that entire back parking lot slopes from south to north to a catch basin that's, that's closer to the north. So it's fairly easy to drop off the rear portion of it, the southerly portion of it, or expand it in the future if you need to.
Is the parking going to be, um, uh, are there going to be allocated spaces for the residents?
There has to be. They actually have to be signed or, that's something I was going to talk with, with Rodney about whether or not they can be painted versus signage in, in that parking lot. Cause perforating that parking lot that many times with signposts is not necessarily what you want to do.
Okay. Um, other questions? So, um, again, a preliminary site plan, basically the layout and things like that. We, we can have a motion if anyone is so, so moved.
I'll make a motion to approve the PS PR 20-19 prelim, preliminary site plan for ESP Enterprises LLC for den, for the den on Broomfield mixed-use commercial residential buildings located at the southwest corner of Broomfield Road and Sweeney Road in the northeast corner of section 26 in the B5 Highway Business Zoning District, finding that the December 23rd, 2020 site plan can comply with the applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary site print plan approval, including sections 14 point two P required site plan information and 14.2S standards for site plan approval. Subject to the following conditions, one, provide the missing items of required applications and site plan information as part of the final site plan submittal, including documentation to compliance with section 6.24 mixed-use buildings and section 14.2P required site plan information. Two, revise the off-street parking cross-access load area and sidewalk details on the final site plan as necessary for compliance with zoning ordinance requirements. And three, all the final site plan information shall be provided in the consolidated set without separate attachments or addendums with all sheets referenced on the cover sheet.
So moved, is there a second?
A second.
Uh, so second is my lap. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, I'll ask, uh, Jennifer to call the roll, please.
Buckley?
Yes.
Shingles? Darren?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
LaBelle?
Yes.
Squatrito?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Very good, thank you.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um, so the next item, uh, which is the last of the new business items is the who knew how many ma- master plans we have? So, uh, is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update? So you had a memo from Rodney, but, uh, and hopefully you were able to pick up your copy of the, uh, of the binders, not long, but it's about 45 pages or so. Uh, but I'll turn it over to, to Rodney and/or Peter for an introduction.
Uh, I, I can, I can do that, but you do have one other new business item that we need to take care of.
Oh, okay, I skipped, I skipped that. All right, let's do them in order. So, uh, we have to reappoint or appoint a planning commission liaison to the ZBA. All right. Uh, Ryan Buckley is currently that person. Right? And so, uh, are there any, are there any nominations for, uh, or self-nominations for the planning commissions representative to the ZBA?
I will continue to serve if the planning commission will have me.
Thank you.
I nominate Ryan Buckley.
I'll accept.
Or?
Who was the sport?
Stan.
Okay, so there was a motion by lap with a second by Shingles to, uh, to, uh, elect Ryan Buckley as the planning commissions representative to the zoning board of appeals. Discussion? Um, this is an official action. I guess I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Cody?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Squatrito?
Yes.
LaBelle?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
That motion carries eight to zero.
Excellent, thank you. So we'll see, we'll see if that changes if they, if they start to meet more frequently, but for now it seems like a good, good arrangement for everybody. Um, all right, so then we'll move to item E, which is the Parks and Rec Master Plan Update. Um, and so you had the memo, but again, if there's anything, uh, Rodney, you'd like to add in terms of, basically, I guess, I guess what I would, what I would suggest is, uh, partly because of the hour and partly just in general principles, but tell us, tell us what we need to do, what we, what we, what's, what's the, what's the bottom line here?
Well, what, 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 uh, we're asking you to do is to be the public body, uh, as we're working on this plan. We have, uh, the state of Michigan guidelines, uh, Michigan Department of Natural Resources guidelines uh, for parks and rec plans are pretty rigorous when it comes to public participation. And, uh, so I ask you, since you have obviously experience, plenty of experience with public participation hearings and of course with the master plan update, we ask you to, to be the public body for, as we're putting this plan together and ultimately as we're taking it through the adoption process to, uh, to review it and also to, uh, to, to handle public hearings and participate in the, in whatever other public participation elements we have uh, for this document. We'll, we'll, uh, be asking you to, to look at how, what we should do for public participation. There are a number of options. Um, and so one of the things we'll be bringing to you early is kind of, is, is sort of menu to consider for, uh, public participation for this project. And, uh, also just be the, be, uh, the representation of the community. We're, we are going to be looking at what do we want to do with these parks. Uh, going over the horizon again, we're always looking over the horizon here. And so we're looking at what we want, five, 10 years more down the road for, uh, for these parks and for any other potential, uh, parks or recreation needs. The, those are all things that can end up in this document. The main purpose of the document is to, for the township to be eligible for state grant funding, uh, through the DNR. Uh, but it has the larger purpose of also focusing our, our efforts and our budget, potential future budgets on the highest priorities for, for Parks and Rec.
Okay. And, and I was reading through, through your memo and it was, it was taking me, you know, it was a trip down memory lane because it was taking place during my early years on the commission. I think probably Alex and I were, were the only ones who were on there. Mike might have been on there as well, or he might have just gone off, but, um, it sounds like last time you kind of farmed out the actual writing of the thing to a, a professor in the, in the rec department at, uh, at CMU who's since retired. Uh, it's, it's sounding like, like, you know, either, either you guys will take the, uh, take on the, the, uh, the responsibility of, of creating the draft and/or if you decide to farm it out, you'll farm it out, but you're not asking us to, to, uh, to actually draft language, but rather to review and give input.
Exactly. Yeah, that's exactly right. Uh, in this case, so, you know, earlier I was asked, you know, who would be, who handles those sidewalk easements? Raise my hand. Well, this is another one. Do my hand. Uh, this is a project that, that, uh, that I'll be, I'll be, uh, spearheading. I've, I've worked on parks and rec plans in the past in my consulting life. Uh, and, and so we'll be pursuing it going forward. We do have a very solid document. Uh, you know, certainly some of the data is, is older now, but this was a very well-done plan. And we also have the benefit, uh, that the city of Mount Pleasant just did the same project. And they, of course, had to collect the very same data, uh, that, that we need, and it's all happily put into their plan that we can simply borrow. So, uh, so we're, we came in at the right time for this project. So the first step will be kind of assembling the data uh, and updating it. And, and as I said, it, it also coming back to you with, with, uh, discussion of potential public participation elements.
Okay, very good. And certainly, uh, all of us should be, you know, becoming familiar with it and, and being prepared to give our input on, on projects and content and things like that. Stan?
Yeah, I was going to say, it, it might just be noted that, uh, the reason a consultant was used the last time was because the master plan, uh, didn't have a lot of depth to it. It was pretty, pretty very basic, very generic. And then the growth of the parks over the, you know, because we don't have recreation in or facilities, they're all outdoor parks, but it's just, um, you know, it just had not been done. So Al, Al Ellard, who you mentioned, was the, um, was the author of the, and was contracted to do that. I was actually on that advisory committee or whatever you, you want to call it. And it actually came on the, on the township commission while that was still, um, in draft. So it's a, it's a, it's a good document and, um, but it's, some standards have changed and, you know, I think we've matured as well. So, um, so, yeah, I'm glad to hear that this is being done.
Very good. Um, other comments or questions from commissioners at this point? So, so really as far as tonight's meeting goes, it was more to get it on our radar. Are you seeking anything else from us at this very moment?
No, it was just introduce it and as you said, get it on your radar and, and give you some good bedtime reading material.
Okay. So, and it, it is in one of those nice, attractive township white binders. So keep it with your important, uh, documents and give it a look as you have time. Anything else? All right. So then we come back to our, our other business item. I'll just ask, you know, we, we, it, it, it will be a permanent fixture on our, on our agendas is the master plan implementation. Uh, my recollection is that we haven't had any, any in-depth discussion on this probably since at least November. I know we didn't last month. Uh, is there anything anyone, uh, wants to bring up at this point? I don't want to, you know, keep the meeting going too long, but, uh, I guess I'll ask, is there anything of, of an urgent nature that anyone wants to bring up at this point? It sounds like we're going to have at least probably a couple of, of, well, pretty much everything we did tonight is going to come back to us next month, right? I mean, there's going to be the two final site plans, probably. There's going to be the SUP on the jail and their site plan. Is there going to be anything else that you're aware of?
Your, your items from December are going to be coming back. The Big Big Coffee, uh, is likely to be on that agenda and, uh, possibly the Consumers Energy site. I haven't heard from them yet, but I wouldn't be surprised.
Okay, that's because those were also preliminary, right?
Yep. So February is going to be a busy agenda.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, I mean, the other, the other we'll get to as we get to, but, um, I'll just ask, is, is there anything anyone has on the master plan implementation right now? I'm seeing, I'm seeing, uh, nine to 11 stone face, so I'm going to take that as a no. We'll move on. So, uh, the next item is extended public comment. If there's anybody who would like to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not, they're invited to do so at this time. Hit your, hit your raise hand button to make yourself known. And, uh, we ask you to give your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to five minutes. Extended public comment is open at 9:27. We have no attendees left, so it's just us. So we'll go ahead and close that back up. Still 9:27. Uh, final board comment, any comments from board members? If not, then, uh, happy, happy inauguration day eve. And anything else exciting you may have planned for the rest of the night? Uh, we've completed our agenda, so we'll stand in adjournment until our February meeting.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.